Commissioner Ariaga.
Present.
Commissioner Ames and Commissioner Benino.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll try a salute to the flag and we'll have Rich lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it says here the first duty here is election of officers. Rich, you had a question about election of officers?
Yeah, I do.
Use your microphone there.
I do. If we vote tonight, it doesn't matter what night. But my question is, if we vote and we have a chairman and we have a vice chairman, and at a meeting, both of them are absent, who presides over the meeting?
The answer to that actually is in your bylaws, which we're going to talk about later this evening.
You have memorized.
The members of the commission who are present elect a temporary chairman for that meeting.
That night?
Yes.
That's a good question. Well, I don't know, but do we as a group feel comfortable electing officers tonight without everybody else here? I'm not really sure I really want to do that. Could we postpone that until next meeting?
I think I move we postpone it.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, all in favor of postponing the election until we have all our people here at next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, we'll do that. Okay, next would be the approval of minutes. Everybody read the minutes of our exciting meeting in November, since we didn't have a meeting in December. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, motion carried, wonderful. Okay, now it's time for oral communications. The section of the meeting provides commissioners and the public an opportunity to address the commission on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the planning commission cannot take any action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. So does there anyone in the audience or staff or commissioners who want to say something during the oral communications?
I would.
Okay, go ahead there, Rich.
I'd like to bring up again an old subject that we had, the Verizon.
Commissioner Ames, I'm sorry, could you be sure and talk into your microphone? We're not being able to hear you on the recordings.
There you go, good.
Good, good. I just wanted to bring the commission up to date. If we haven't told you yet, that we voted on to not approve the Verizon on aesthetics. The city council overrode our disapproval and approved it. However, at that meeting, I appeared as a citizen and it was determined that the lease was not an appropriate lease. And the lease has been thrown out and somebody is working on a new lease. I don't know who somebody is, but we're working on a new lease. So what had happened in actuality is the city council disapproved an illegal lease or overturned our vote on a illegal... They overrode an illegal lease. So we're waiting now to see what Verizon, what the new lease is going to be. I just wanted to bring you up to date, stammering through this, that it has been postponed.
Okay, anybody else want to speak to the commission? Okay, in that case, oral communications will be closed. And at this time, we will move on to our public hearings. It says continued public hearings, there's none. I guess there was something we did continue from last time. Did we ever think about the forest products?
That's been pulled by the applicant, so they may reapply at a different time.
Okay, that was in the... Yeah, so, okay, so forest products thing is pulled, okay. So that's not going to be here tonight. Okay, so now new public hearings. We start with, it says Chris Farms on Jacobs Avenue.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. So we're looking at Chris Farms, it's at 3408 Jacobs Avenue. We're looking at use permits and coastal development permit for retail and non-volatile manufacturing. For some geographic context, this is the location on Jacobs Avenue. And as we zoom in, this is the building in the parcel that we're talking about. This is what it looks like from the outside of the building. And so the actual project description, the applicant's proposing a cannabis retail facility. This requires a cannabis, or I'm sorry, a conditional use permit. The initial proposed uses include dispensary-style retail and retail delivery. Future retail uses could include onsite consumption. The applicant is also proposing a non-volatile cannabis manufacturing facility, which requires a minor use permit. Much the same way that, you know, we would bring designer view to you. This is one that, instead of having it at a director hearing, we brought it to the commission to basically look at it as a one big unit. The project site itself is in the coastal zone, requires a coastal development permit. And commercial cannabis licenses are being processed separately. So on top of these two, they're also, they've applied for distribution, which is a principally permitted use in the zone district. Staff findings, so we find that this project's located in the CS Zone District, in which cannabis retails as it is a conditionally permitted use and non-volatile cannabis manufacturing is a minor conditionally permitted use. The zone district is consistent with the underlying general surface commercial land use designation and the use is consistent with the general plan. The project location is in accord with the objectives of the CS Zone District and the objectives of the coastal zone. The project location and conditions under which it would be operated and maintained will not be detrimental to public health. And the use permits are discretionary actions subject to SEQA. This project will qualify for a Class 1 exemption from SEQA as it's going to be involving the conversion and minor alteration of existing structures. The project will comply with all applicable provisions of the code and the proposed use is consistent with the local coastal program's land use plan and implementation plan. We do have a series of recommended conditions of approval for this item. So prior to operation, they must acquire Eureka commercial cannabis licenses and state of California cannabis licenses. And the facility must pass a pre-operational inspection with city staff. This has to happen before cannabis operations commence for those licenses. And then, you know, this is in the code, but we're just reiterating here, the use permit may be suspended and forwarded to you for revocation if that were not to be adhered to. Operators must comply with all requirements contained in the onsite cannabis consumption policy if they are going to move forward with any kind of onsite consumption. They must install, operate, and maintain odor control measures such that no cannabis odors are detectable beyond the parcel, including the public right-of-way and neighboring parcels. Any facility operators, they must submit license and/or permit application materials to the city. And that includes fire, building, police. And they must implement safety, security, and other related requirements imposed by those departments. They must install, operate, and maintain a security system. And the applicant will be required to obtain all building and fire permits to the satisfaction of the Public Works Building and Humboldt Bay Fire Departments. And then finally, standard protocol for incidental archaeological discovery applies. So if there's a project in the future that involves ground disturbing, they would have to adhere to that standard. So our staff recommendation is to approve the use permits and CDP, allowing cannabis retail and non-volatile manufacturing at 3408 Jacobs Avenue. I've provided a motion for you to consider. I'm available for any questions that you may have. And representative of the applicant is here in the audience if you have questions for them directly.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I guess right now we'll perhaps open it up for a little bit of public comment. Or anybody has any questions of staff first, I guess, maybe? Any commissioners have staff?
Staff?
Yeah, do you want to ask the staff if they have any question for them?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't, in reading this, I didn't see what, how the non-volatile is going to be, what fuel is going to be used?
So, non-volatile, you can use heat, pressure, water, carbon dioxide, ethanol would be permissible.
I understood those, but what one is going to be used?
So this being a use permit, so the applicant, I believe they're going to use ethanol in their processes. But if it's not them, another person could use any other non-volatile solvent in their process. So just to disassociate the use permit from the specific applicant.
Is, I visited the site. Is, they're going to have to be a special wall between the site and the back room where all points is doing their manufacturing? Is it going to be... What, we've always, we've discussed before explosions. Is there going to be an explosion-proof wall?
So depending on the type of process they present in their building permits, they're going to be held to different standards as far as, you know, explosion-proof equipment or firewalls, et cetera. That gets down to the specifics of how big their operation is, what kind of materials they're using, how it's set in the context of the rest of the building. So the short answer is yes, something appropriate. We'll need to separate the two uses. What that's going to be, I couldn't tell you until they provide us with engineered plans. And so that's the next step in this for them is, they're going through the licensing, they're going through the use permit, and then they submit a full, submit a to the building department of the specifics of how they're going to build out their space.
Okay. And then, could I just ask a question of the audience, please?
Oh, well, yeah, well, we're going to bring them up.
I'm still on this, but are any of you gentlemen representing this? Okay, you'll be up there, thank you. No, no, I just wanted to know, because I'll have some questions for you.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, well, all right, in that case, I don't have any questions right now at this time. We can open the public hearing. And usually we start with the applicant. So if the applicant wants to step forward, the applicant's here, please step forward, state your name and city of residence, and then we'll... Please speak.
I'm Glenn Kaminsky and I live in McKinleyville. Just to answer your question, we were going to do heat press manufacturing. There's going to be...
You're going to do what, sir?
Heat press manufacturing, so there'll be nothing that can explode or ignite at all. Any other questions?
No, but your presentation now.
I didn't bring one.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Then I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the... There was no one there from your firm. And the all-point gentleman took me through and showed me the offices and things where you're going to be. But I didn't see specifically at this time, the area of consumption where you went in and tried your product. How big is that going to be?
We just had the plans redrawn. I believe it is 20 feet wide by 30 feet long, off the top of my head. And it's going to be, if approved, in the back corner of the section we're developing in the front.
Bathroom is now sort of?
The other side.
The other side.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
Are you going to definitely have an onsite setup, or is that just something in the future?
And that's going to depend on the city and all of you and how things go forward, yeah. It would be nice, I'd like to.
To have onsite?
Yeah.
But you're definitely going to have a retail aspect where you could have a store there?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Anybody else from the audience want to speak? Okay, well, then I'll close the public hearing. So, okay, the only thing that I have a question on is the onsite aspect of it. That area there usually isn't something that's for, you know, restaurants and bars and things like that. Is that really...
Well, it is a service commercial zone district, so it's a use that would be available anywhere through that district. So that's how staff went into it.
Okay, because I'm kind of uncomfortable with having an onsite consumption spot in that area. It's not really a...
When I, I will add, and again, I haven't reviewed a onsite consumption application at this point yet for this one. They haven't submitted that yet. But a lot of businesses are going to more of like a, kind of, I would call it almost like a winery sort of model, where you come in and you purchase products and you might have like a taste of something and go on your way from there. So I don't anticipate this is going to be, you know, like a cannabis bar. I mean, that is, it could be, I mean, that's possible in the range of things. But I think a lot of what you're going to see in the coming months is some of these come to the commission are going to be like real low-impact onsite consumption. And then we do have a full policy document that they have to adhere to with the city on the licensing side as far as how that's going to work, as far as, you know, public health, safety, ventilation, those types of things.
Sure, sure, okay, yeah, all right. Okay, any other questions there for the staff?
I just have a statement. I talked to the two adjacent neighbors next door and although they weren't the owners of the firms, no one objected to it going in. In fact, they were surprised it was going to happen, but no one objected to it. And in answer to your question, Joe, it seems to me that the last three or four retail operations that have come before us, they've all had, I want to call them consumption rooms, but they've all had rooms to go in.
That's true, but they weren't really located on a busy highway either, which is kind of, that's the thing I'm kind of thinking about. Let's say if there was a bar, would we allow a bar there on Jacobs Avenue, you think?
Well, I don't know, does that, does that little restaurant at the airport serve beer and wine? I don't know.
I'd just like to make a comment, though. I don't think that, you know, it's a commercial service area, so having more people in that area is great. And I don't think that, I think it's a, different to compare bar activities where you get a lot of people who are getting intoxicated on a substance. And sometimes, you know, we've seen the effects of that in comparing that to a cannabis bar when it's kind of is treated as an upper echelon thing and you don't ever see that kind of ruckus in a crowd of people who are imbibing on cannabis. And it's usually, you know, I think that would be great. And something off the side of the highway that's done well should attract tourism, which is awesome, and might also beautify an area that isn't used so often because there's like a U-Haul over there and stuff, which would be cool because the farm store's pretty cool if you have dogs and pets and you can walk down on that area. So I'm actually kind of excited to see, you know, theoretically, if things go through, like what you could do with the area, you know, as it adds positivity to our community, so.
And I just want to add one more item that I think gets at where you're going for, Commissioner Benino. In our policy document, we do require them to have plans as far as education for staff and for visitors and then also transportation planning, you know, so making sure if someone is in a state where they shouldn't leave that and get on the highway, that there's a protocol in place to get people where they need to go safely.
Okay, okay, that's good. It's good to hear. And the neighbors were noticed on this too, right, they all?
Correct, this was noticed.
Did you have any negative feedback from any of the people you talked to?
Correct, I received no comments at all on this particular item.
Okay, all righty. Certainly, whatever you want to say.
Useful comment about CBD. So, you know, the cool thing is, is if like you're at one of these cannabis establishments, if you know your tolerance is low or if you're going to experience something or you can try something for the first time, try a bunch of CBD first because it helps buffer your tolerance, so you can't get too intoxicated on THC. Useful tip to beginners, just interesting, but...
Thank you, thank you for that, okay. That would apply to me, that's right, very much so, okay, that's right. Okay, okay. Okay, the rest of it, you know, seems pretty straightforward to me. So any other further discussion about, before we think about a motion or... No, nothing, okay. All righty then, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, I'll entertain one, so you go ahead if you want to make a motion, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Eureka approving a conditional use permit, CUP-19-0007, allowing off-site and/or onsite cannabis retail and minor use permit, MUP-19-005, allowing non-volatile cannabis manufacturing, 5,000 square feet or less of manufacturing floor area, and a coastal development permit, CDP-19-0015 at 3408 Jacobs Avenue, APN 014-131-008.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So any discussion amongst us right now on the motion? No discussion, okay. In that case, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, thank you very much, Chris Farms. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Supreme Green Distribution LLC.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Benino, this is me one more time. So this is a cannabis cultivation and non-volatile manufacturing facility at 1515 Fourth Street. For reference, so it's located in this area here, is what people colloquially call Little Fourth Street. It's this building here, and this is the front of the building. And so the project, the applicant is proposing an indoor cannabis cultivation facility, which requires a conditional use permit. The applicant's also proposing a non-volatile cannabis manufacturing facility, which requires a minor use permit. The project site is in the coastal zone and requires a coastal development permit. And commercial cannabis licenses are being processed separately. And some of these commercial cannabis licenses for distribution have already been issued as it is principally permitted in the zone district. In regards to findings, the project, it's located in the CS District, in which cannabis, oh, I'm sorry, that's a mistake there. Cannabis cultivation is conditionally permitted and non-volatile manufacturing is minor conditionally permitted use. The CS Zone District is consistent with the underlying highway service commercial land use designation. The project location's in accord with the objectives of the CS Zone and the objectives of the coastal zone. The project location and conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. And use permits are discretionary actions that require SEQA. However, this project qualifies for a Class 1 exemption from SEQA. The project will comply with the applicable provisions of the code and the proposed use is consistent with the local coastal program's land use plan and implementation plan. Again, we have a whole series of recommendations of approval. Prior to operation, again, Eureka commercial cannabis licenses and state licenses must be acquired and the facility must pass a pre-operational inspection. They must install, operate, and maintain odor control measures to ensure that no cannabis odors are detectable beyond the parcel, including the public right-of-way and neighboring parcels. They must submit license and/or permit application materials to the city of Eureka Fire Department, Building Department, and Police Department and implement safety, security, and other related requirements imposed by those departments. They must install, operate, and maintain a security system. The applicant must obtain all required building and fire permits. And standard protocol for incidental archaeological discovery shall be followed at this location. So staff recommendation is to approve the use permits and CDP at 1515 Fourth Street. And again, I've provided a motion for the council. I'm available for questions. And the team from this particular application is here in the audience and available for questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much, Rob. So, okay, so does any of the commissioners have any questions about this particular project of the staff?
I have the same question.
I have the same question. How are they going, how are you going to, what are you going to use for non-volatile?
On this one, from their license application, I believe they're actually bringing in cannabis materials like distillate oil from another location and then doing a manufacturing process with it there. So they would use like a pre-rolled joints, then drizzling or dipping them. But they can give you a more detailed answer, but that's my understanding of...
I'll talk, I'll say when they come forward, okay, thank you.
Yep.
This one also going to be a retail situation?
No, there's no retail involved in this application.
Okay. And isn't there one kind of near here or something, on Third Street or somewhere right near the...
Down, as far as retail or other?
Another manufacturing place too, is there a couple?
There's other, there's another one at 1515 Fifth Street, which has a minor use permit hearing tomorrow, actually. And some things in the Bridge District.
There's another one, just as you come into town, where it used to be the coffee place. Remember, we voted on that little place in the back there?
Yeah, there's two there. So 22, 28 Fourth Street and 2200 Fourth Street are licensed cannabis facilities.
Yeah, okay, great, great. Okay, great, all right, well, then we'll open the public hearing here and we can perhaps hear from the applicant and any others who are interested in this particular project.
Good afternoon, everyone, how are you?
Wonderful. Oh, sorry, there you go, sorry about that.
My name is Trevor Berger, I'm from Honesdale, Pennsylvania. I plan on becoming Eurican as soon as this is approved and we get the process going. He was actually correct, in the process, we won't be extracting anything. We'll actually be buying distillate from a third party and then manufacturing it on top of our already pre-rolled joints that we are also going to manufacture. So I won't actually be doing any non-volatile, it just falls under that license.
Well, that's good.
Gummy bears?
No, sir, no.
Just pre-rolled stuff?
Just pre-rolled joints and then, like he said, drizzled or painted with distillate and a thin coating and then sold that way.
Painted with what?
Distillate, it's what, the technical word for the material when they're doing extractions, when they mention all these different ways to extract oil from products. It's just called distillate, that's the end result.
And you put that on the paper?
Yeah, so you would thin it out and you would actually paint it on to a joint. And then you take that joint and you put it, I roll it in keef, that's the intended plan here. So when you buy the product, it's a joint with distillate on it, oil on it, that's coated in keef. It's a really strong joint for certain audiences.
Good.
Yeah, that's what they say. Exactly.
Okay. Okay, that's terrific. Anybody else have any questions for them? Or is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak? Or do you have any other things you want to tell us about the place, or...
I'm sorry, sir?
I have one question, it's just a personal question. You're moving here from Pennsylvania to open this shop?
Yes, sir, technically. I've been here, I had a farm in Honeydew that I recently just sold. It was fully permitted. I recently just sold it in August. And now this is the next project that I would like to undertake because of logistics and bringing my family here. And Honeydew, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's not an easy place to get to. And in the city, it's better for my family to come here. So that's why I wanted to get a commercial building where everyone could have a place to go and eat and live a better life.
We just like to see people move into Eureka, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you guys having me.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, but somebody else want to talk? There you go.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Yeah.
Hey guys, how's it going?
Oh, Name and C.
My name is Joe Nguyen, and I'm one of the founders of Sisu Extracts, we're right down the road down here, and I'm here to speak on behalf of these fine gentlemen behind me. Long and short of it, why these guys' proposition I think is a great thing, is we're losing operators around here, day by day quickly, for a variety of reasons, market pressures, lack of compliance with regulatory, collapsing market positions where the job they did is just no longer needed, so we do need new operators like this coming into the space, in particular, we need operators who treat people with integrity and operate in a compliant way. I'm new to knowing Mr. Trevor, but I've known Nate for quite some time here, I spent many years living in Willow Creek and didn't live too far from him, and he's taken my father hunting, and he's a very good friend of ours, I've never heard a bad word about the guy in Humboldt County in many years, and that's saying something, because that kind of goes around a bit, and I've watched him set up and go through all the operations they've been through, they've worked very, very hard to be compliant on this project, they've been very, very diligent, and they went to the extra length of hiring Mr. Stephen Lou, who outside of people who live inside of these buildings knows the regulations better than anyone I've ever met, they're working very, very hard to do things right, and in particular, business like this coming into town creates an amazing opportunity for a company like mine, because they consume the product that we make, and then create another value-added step, and then ship the product out of county, the majority of the product that we make from Humboldt County farmers' crops is distillate, what he was referring to, it's a ultra-purified form of THC oil, we ship most of this out to companies in San Francisco and Los Angeles who go through a value-added step, but having operators here who have the ability to go ahead and go through that value-add step provides another taxation point for the county, brings more revenue here locally, and causes more of the value that Humboldt County farmers are generating to stay here locally, mainly in these guys' pockets and the pockets of their employees, so I would love to see more operators in this class of individual coming into the space, consuming the products that my company makes, we always love to see that, and providing survivability to our market as we're losing a lot of our friends and compatriots, because times are kind of tough. Thanks for hearing me out, guys.
Well, thank you, Joe. Anybody have any questions to Joe?
Thank you.
And Stephen, you want to talk? Here's Stephen Lou.
Yes, my name is Stephen Lou, I'm a resident here in Eureka, I'm a consultant that handles compliance and permitting in the cannabis industry, I also am a co-owner of the facility here, and to build on what Joe was saying, this is one project here at this facility, we have another unit, and some of the projected plans for that space, as we're seeking the minor conditional use permit here for non-volatile extraction, is to develop a commercial kitchen, and almost launch it similar to like a startup kitchen, where people that are interested in developing cannabis products, edibles, consumable products, gummies, can have an opportunity to have a built-out space to rent, and to not have to undertake the extensive costs of securing a building, developing a commercial kitchen, going through the permitting process, the state of California has a shared-use manufacturing license at the state, and we're looking to make that available for small startup businesses at a much more affordable price, instead of trying to cough up capital to go and buy a building, have the overhead of the lease and operations, to be able to come in at a price point that they can launch a startup, develop a product similar to what Arcata does with their non-cannabis, you know, shared kitchen facility, so I'm pretty excited at that opportunity, and we'll be sourcing, those tenants will be able to source product from local manufacturers, like Mr. Nguyen, and create this value-added product, to ensure that as much of the potential and much of the profits from this industry stay within Humboldt, rather than getting exported to other areas in this state.
This shared-use license, is that something new the state has, or has that been since?
It's been here, it's been around for at least a year, year and a half.
Okay, and that used to, it's just like the other license, you have to apply to the state for it, right?
Yes.
The people coming in have to apply for the license also, the people that are using your facility to develop something, they have to have a license?
Yes, they would have to go through the same city, approval through the City of Eureka, and then they would have to go through the same approval process through the state, but it'd just be at the, they'd be able to share the commercial kitchen, and so, under state licensing regulations, other than the shared-use exclusion for manufacturing facilities, if I had a client that wanted to develop, you know, let's say there's a building with 10,000 square feet, every licensee and every activity undertaken by that licensee would have to have a separate piece of that building, and so you could not share any of that space within licensees, the shared-use manufacturing is a specific exclusion focused on making manufactured edible products, that allows us to share, to have one commercial kitchen shared by multiple licensees, and this is a way for, it's an opportunity for people that want to launch an edible product, there were a lot of artisanal makers of chocolates, gummies, and other products, that were not able to secure the funds to be able to actually launch their product, or they, it was just too much of a process to, you have to understand, someone who could make brownies and sell them in a unregulated 215 market, that was something you could do in your kitchen, and to, the cost of developing a commercial kitchen, to understand the permitting process is quite extensive, but we'll be able to create a framework for them, where, hey, you have 10 hours, once a week in this kitchen, you can go and make your product, we'll have two hours in between, and the goal will eventually be to hopefully operate this facility on a 24-hour basis, and have two shifts per day, 10 hours per licensee with two hours in between, to basically be able to do cleanup, and when you're talking about edible products, they're a very high-margin, high-value-added product, you're talking about, you know, one liter of distillate, $5,000 market price, although we'll have to ask Sisu what the current prices are, but that makes 50,000 doses at, or, let's see, that's a, well, it's around a thousand doses or a thousand packages, so you're taking something like that, the cost of the actual cannabis itself is very low, but the margins are there, and it's a great opportunity for small businesses to come and basically be able to launch a product, or maybe relaunch a product that was already on the market in the two or three years ago, in the medical market, and, you know, we hope eventually graduate from our facility, and either have an ability to secure their own facility, or perhaps to, you know, maybe white-label and go through another manufacturer that's able to carry on their successful brand or product that was launched locally, or maybe they want to just stay small and support, or be able to just supply local dispensaries with a locally-made product, you know, when you go to the stores, you're looking for edible products, there's not a lot of them being made around here, I mean, there's the Space Gems is probably the most successful product that's being made out here, and which is great, it's a wonderful product, but I don't see very many local chocolates or other products, and they have, people have to go and leave, and perhaps try to secure a shared facility down in the bay, but we'd like to keep the talent, the knowledge, the expertise, and the opportunity here in Humboldt when we can.
So, just go ahead, so if someone's using your facility, and they developed a really good product, and it was selling a lot, would they eventually move out of your facility, or would they keep manufacturing there and selling outside? Is the, I'm just asking for my own edification.
Sure.
Is the process to develop something, and then, okay, now I've developed it at inexpensive costs, now I'm going out and rent a building and get bigger? Is that the whole?
That's an opportunity for them, and I encourage as many people to apply within the City of Eureka as possible, the staff here is great to work with, the process has been very smooth, and as much as I can, I'd encourage them to go and set up shop here, but it's up to them, right, it would just be tenants that would be using this space, I'd be helping with permitting and compliance, and we'd be building a framework around that, but it's completely up to the business owner, how they want to scale their opportunities, some people might want to stay small and not let go of control, some folks may get investors and go and secure property elsewhere.
How many of these are you going to have in that, that building doesn't look that big to me, I mean, how many of these are you going to offer, 10, 5, 20?
Well, it depends, there is another tenant in the space that's going through the permitting process as well right now, they've secured their distribution license, we're working with them to get building permit plans put together for a commercial kitchen, and
In that same?
In that same space, yeah, like half the building where you, when you see, there's that boarded-up garage door facing the street, that unit's about 2,000 square feet, and you don't need a ton of space for a commercial kitchen, it just depends on what kind of product you can make, I know, I helped set up like one of the largest manufacturers for, you know, with respect to edible products, like one of the more successful brands, and I know they're turning out gummies in a room that was smaller than the size of these chambers here, and they're making a lot of them, you're talking about just having a commercial kitchen, and then you're making a big batch of gummies, and you just pour it in a machine and just spits out gummies, and so, it's, you don't need a ton of space, and you can make a huge, you can have a huge footprint in relatively small space, which is why it's such an attractive opportunity for people to come in, as far as how many people will have the opportunity here, you know, I was thinking about doing, setting up an opportunity where for less than $30,000, including cost of local and state licenses, someone could come and set up, and be able to take the space, including rent for the whole year, for one shift a week, one 10-hour shift a week, four shifts, or basically four shifts a month, and be able to start making a product, and being compliant, and creating something that could grow and scale, but in that case, you'd be two shifts a day, so, per week 14 shifts, however, however many people want to take up those time slots, it's up to them, as far as how much rent they want to pay, and how much of this opportunity they want to secure and scale.
Would Supreme Green own any of the product, 5%, 3%, or, because it was a matter of fact, it was discovered in their product, like if you're an employee of a company and you create something, the company gets a part of it?
Sure, I'm outside of Supreme Green, I'm one of the co-owners of the actual property, and I've, we haven't discussed any of the specific, the other tenant wanted to build out the commercial kitchen, so they're going to occupy that space, but as far as how much an equity ownership, what we discussed was just a sublease, there was no intent to try to, you know, take a percentage or cut, or be, you know, I know Shark Tank was doing that, it was very, it was looked upon very poorly, you know, if there is value that we're adding, you know, the goal is to, in working with Supreme Green, you know, if they secure, or the other tenant, if they secure shelf space and stuff, there's definitely discussion, right, we're building, we're building an incubator, and we're going to have businesses that are very focused on becoming successful, they're going to be doing their own development of their own products and brands, and going to be connecting with different sales opportunities and dispensaries, and anyone that comes into that space, they can be part of that network. Now, if these other parties are adding value, they're helping with distribution, they're like, if you partner with us, we're already in 100 stores, we'll put you in 100 stores, if the product is good, then maybe there could be a discussion about that, but it's, it would be, it wouldn't be predatory, it would be in the sense that we're building something, we're building something bigger than any one party could develop themselves.
Thank you. All right, great, well, thank you very much.
I would just like to state also that, for the rest of you in the audience, we just forgot to hit the three-minute button.
When you guys started asking questions?
So we're asking questions?
Yeah.
Wow, you are lucky.
When you started asking questions?
That's what happens. Okay, so is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak about Supreme Green at 1515 Fourth Street?
Yes, hello, my name's Gary Lewis, I live at 31P Street, and I don't want this to be misconstrued as some sort of a complaint, I imagine this is going to be a good contribution to the area, I just wanted to point out something that I just want to be sure that you're considering. The location here, 1515 Fourth Street, at 1522 Third Street is the Needle Exchange Hatcher, these two buildings sit directly opposite each other across the alleyway, literally 30 feet apart, this is the exact spot where a lot of Hatcher's clients will be sleeping at night, a lot of drug dealers pass through Hatcher, through this alleyway, if they know that there's this kind of business going on, obviously, it's going to require probably more security than it would in another location, now, from my perspective, added security in the neighborhood might be a good thing, but I just want to be sure that you and the Planning Commission and the people running the business are aware of the fact that this is an exact spot where, you know, now, obviously, the drug addicts that are going to be hanging out in that exact spot are addicted to heroin and meth, they're not looking for cannabis specifically, obviously, so perhaps it's not as big an issue as I might think it is, but still, I think the security should be taken into consideration, it is going to be more of a security issue at that exact spot than it might be in another location.
And you live in the neighborhood you said?
Yes, I live actually across the driveway from Hatcher.
Oh, okay.
At 301P, I'm at Third and P, and so this is.
And your name was again?
Gary Lewis, L-E-W-I-S.
And what was the name of the building that is across the alley, or the company?
It's the Needle Exchange, which the acronym for it is Hatcher, H-A-C-H-R.
And I was just going to ask staff, the neighbors and all these people in these residential things, they all got noticed on this meeting, too?
Correct, I believe that's how Mr. Lewis is aware of it, and then, just to speak to some of the concerns, so we have done some pre-site security walkthroughs with Mr. Lou, one of our police captains and code enforcement to talk about ways to better fortify that space, that building, the back fenced-in area, so we took probably an hour and a half with them just to do a specific security consultation.
Good.
And then as part of our licensing program as well, and as part of that, we also do drop-in inspections, on top of annual inspections, so if they were to slip or remove security items or things like that, we would catch it and correct it as it goes, and we also take complaints from the neighborhood, if you had odor complaints or security complaints, you could contact me specifically.
Okay.
And part of that regimen would also include, like cameras and stuff?
Yeah, so we require them, and the state of California also has very stringent security requirements, so we include it in our, it's in our municipal code, it's in our use permits, it's in our licensing, it's kind of a belt-and-suspenders approach, in case anyone takes it away, we have it in other spots to make sure that we maintain that, that's been a really big hallmark of our program is security.
Yeah, very good, and odor, too, right?
Correct.
Everybody's aware of the odor situation?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, well, great, well, thank you very much, Mr. Lewis, we appreciate that very much, for your coming by. Okay, so any other, anybody want to talk about this from the audience? No? Okay, we'll bring them back here to the commission, any other questions about staff or anything you guys want to talk about?
Well, I mean, based on what Gary Lewis brought to our attention, I think it's great that there's another business going into that neighborhood that brings compliance, because, you know, that's my background, I have a lot of expertise in compliance and cannabis businesses, and that's one thing that we are very strict on in that industry, is safety and cameras, and lighting up our buildings, and making it a comfortable space for our community to interact in, and so, I'm excited for that neighborhood, because I think it will make it better, so, thank you, guys.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, I don't have any further comments about that, because it does seem like you're addressing all those security concerns, Rob and everybody, so I guess we'd entertain a motion.
No, you said you were excited.
All right, okay.
I want to hear excitement in the voice.
There's excitement across the board. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Eureka approving a conditional use permit, CUP-19-0008, allowing cannabis cultivation, 5,000 square feet of cultivation area or less, a minor use permit, MUP-19-0006, allowing non-volatile cannabis manufacturing, 5,000 square feet or less of manufacturing floor area, and a coastal development permit, CDP-19-0015 at 1515 Fourth Street, APN 002-031-006.
That was excitement, I like that.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, there we go.
I second the motion.
There you go, okay. Second? There you go. Okay. Seconded it with the motion. Okay. All right, they have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this particular Supreme Green? I think? No other discussion? Okay, then ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Okay, hearing none, that passes three to zero. All right. Thank you, Supreme Green. Okay, all right. All right. Next thing on the agenda, there's no more public hearings. There's a business, new business, citywide 2020 five-year capital improvement program. We have to do a resolution on that.
All right, you get me one more time. So the 2020 capital improvement program, this is our annual review of the city's capital improvement program, or CIP, for general plan consistency. CIPs are required under California Government Code and the planning commission is required to review them under municipal code in Chapter 152. This doesn't qualify as a project under SEQA. And there's only two new projects in the list this year. There's some electric vehicle charging stations and a fueling station at the tank farm. And I have a suggested motion here, but I also have the city engineer here who can give you more detail or answer any questions that you may have on this particular item.
Great. Okay. We'll open this up to anybody, the city engineer, first of all, to come and talk to us about this. And then we'll have any discussion by the, this isn't a public hearing, but we'll just, let's see if we can talk to the city engineer.
Good evening.
Hello.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry. Good evening. I did not prayer, excuse me, I did not prepare a presentation for tonight, but we do have two new projects in the CIP this year. I think last year we brought a pretty large suite of projects to you. We had a, we definitely had a few more. We included a whole new section last year, which was our information technology section, trying to kind of bring our CIP more into the, into the now with needing to keep our technology up to date as far as servers and that sort of thing. So this year we have two. They happen to both fall in the realm of, I guess, either vehicle charging or vehicle fueling. We, to start with the vehicle charging project, that is a project that we're working with RCA with. So the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, who's a JPA, who City of Eureka is a member with. They pursue grant funds for projects like this. And they were able to successfully get some funding to do electric vehicle charging stations. So they partnered with us looking for areas that would be good to have these charging stations installed at. Currently, we're looking at, they, during the grant, I should say, during the application process for the grant, they were, they had to identify locations. So we're looking at one that's over in the Third and H area, where our Third and G and H lot is. And then another one that would be not through that grant program, but through another set of funds at another location in the city. So we have one location that we're looking at and another location that's still yet to be determined. But those stations, basically, those charging stations would be there for public use, for folks who have electric vehicles to be able to pull up at any time during the day and plug in and pay a fee and charge their vehicle there. Again, it's partnership with RCA. They would bring money to the table as far as getting the infrastructure on the ground. The city would partner in providing some design and construction management oversight to the table as far as that project goes. I don't know if you want to ask questions about that project before I move on to the next one, or if you have any questions?
My question was, you said RCA is bringing some money. Are they paying for this, the first one? Or who's paying? How much does the city have to pay on this?
That first one doesn't look like there'll be much city contribution other than staff time. That's what I meant by the design and construction management.
When you're referring to the first one, are you referring to the first site or one, or one charging station?
The first site. Yeah, the second...
How many charging stations?
Right now, it's either going to be one dual port or two dual ports. We're still trying to look at how that lays out in the parking area. They take up a number of parking spaces. And so, and how that, the orientation where it is physically right now, I think everybody would like to have two dual ports. So that would be four areas that somebody could actually go and plug in their vehicle. It kind of is a space constraint, limited though.
What is the cost of what to put one in? If I wanted to put one in my house, if I had an electric car, what is the cost of a charging station?
Well, it depends on a few things. I'm not an expert in this field. We kind of...
You know more than I do.
Yeah, no, I'll give, I'll try to give you somewhat of an answer. I know that, from what RCA has told us, because they're more or less the experts when it comes to the vehicle charging stuff, the, there's three different levels of chargers. So there's kind of small charger, like you'd have at a residence. Then you have a medium power, and that's kind of what we're talking around, a mid-range charger. And then you have like superchargers. Those are maybe the ones you hear about, like Tesla has, you know, they have their fast char, or what are they, I think, fast charges or something like that. And I think other brands do as well. So there's different levels. If at your house, those small levels, I don't know the price. I know for the dual port plug-in chargers that we're talking about, just for the plug-in charger itself, it sounds like those are, you know, anywhere from like $10,000 to $15,000, depending on what brand and model and kind of what you want to have done with it. That's just for the, you know, that'd be to have two plugins. Fortunately, that's all I really know is for Costco.
They'd have to pay for the infrastructure to get the power to it and stuff like that.
Correct. Yeah.
So the ones we see down at the mall where there are five or six in a row, basically you're saying they cost $10,000, $15,000 a piece to put in, sort of?
I think those ones are probably more expensive. Those are the Tesla, those are the high-powered ones. I just, I have no idea what the cost would be for those.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just trying to learn.
Yeah.
Then you said the second one, there might not be money for that one? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I think that that's one we're still, we're still working through to try to find the location. You know, how many spaces could that be? RCA and the discussions we've had, they said they're willing to bring some other funding sources towards that, but it would be less of a, you know, the full grant funds to cover it. It might be a match. We're still trying to work out what those, what that might be. Kind of have to find a location and then determine how many charging ports you could have there.
And then the people and the user, they gotta, you have to pay a fee? How much does it cost?
That I don't know. That is something that it's not, it sounds like it's not a huge fee, but it, there'll be a meter, there'll be a service that'll have to be installed for each of these. So there'll be a meter running and then there'll be a fee when you swipe it that'll, they'll, they'll be charged for it.
That would come back to the city or to RCA?
To the city is my understanding.
So if there's a profit, the city makes money off of it?
I believe so.
Okay. We'll have to talk to the finance people.
It's not a hu, it's not a big, you know, my understanding from RCA is not, there's not a ton of money, you know, it's not like a huge moneymaker. I think, you know, often like, you know, like our parking meters and parking lots, you know, it's not a huge generator. It kind of maintains those facilities. And I think this would help to maintain those facilities, not really bring in a lot of revenue for the city.
Okay. Any other questions about the charging stations? No?
Can the city lose money on them? What if no one uses it? What if you install one and no one uses it?
Yeah, so we, I think we kind of came to the location that one we're looking at at Third and H. I'll get to your question specifically in a moment. But we looked at the use of the ones that are existing in that area. And that's kind of why they got the grant, because they could prove this area, there's a high use. Those ones that are there are used almost, you know, not only are they in use a lot, but they're continuing to grow. So you look from the time that they were installed to when to now, and you can see this, they were showing me the graphs just the other day. It's kind of this continued growth spike. So it seems like there's more and more electric vehicles out on the road. And so those stations are getting used more and more. So there's a demand there for it. And that's why these grant funds are there. I can't look in the future and say how, you know, how everything's gonna project out. But it does seem like that trend is growing pretty rapidly as far as the use of electric vehicles. And then you would think that these ports would, or these charging stations would get more use.
Just as a, as a suggestion, I volunteer at the hospital. And they've got two of those over there. And there are always people parked in there. And it's only just a dual port. They just have one dual port thing.
Okay.
So that might be a spot where they could probably use some more if you could, if there's a city lot or city property over there. Hospital definitely would, could use more of those.
Okay.
Well, true. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, that hospital location would be good.
You can read this one, shoot.
Oh, wait, wait. We still have to finish the second. We got a second one.
Oh, we got to finish the second.
He's got to talk about the second one.
So the, the second one is a city fueling station. So this project was added to CIP this year as we, we learned some things going through the power safety, power shut-offs. We learned that, you know, we knew that fuel was very important for our continued operation, not only for Public Works, but for police and fire. You got to have the fuel there in order to operate your vehicles to be responsive during emergency situations. And so what we found is we, you know, those PSPs has happened. It was kind of scheduled ahead. We're able to coordinate and try to align up, being able to have fuel and have resources available for us. So when the power went out, that we were able to respond and make sure that, you know, all your basic, the basic needs were provided. Water, your water turned on, sewer kept, you know, you'd be able to flush your toilet and the sewer kept running, as well as being able to have police and fire keep those vehicles on the road so they could be responsive. What we found during that, we learned a lot, is that it's not always, it's difficult to have a source that's reliable for fuel. And that's really a critical thing for the city. So we were able to get those, to work agreements with local contractors to have fuel available for us. But it was, it was clear that we would need to have something more, more substantial, something more solid for us to rely on, just to make sure that, you know, in a pinch, we're able to be responsive to the citizens of Eureka and the surrounding areas. So that, that kind of pushed us towards this project and being able to have a fuel supply here at the city that police, fire, Public Works, and other, other parts of the city could, could utilize in order to be responsive during, during an emergency situation, or whether it be a PSPS, or whether it be an earthquake, or whether it be a fire or tsunami, you know, any of our natural disasters that are, that, you know, we could potentially come up against here on the North Coast.
So essentially, this is a gas station for the city on Wood and L Street?
Correct.
And what do the neighbors think of that?
We haven't got that far yet. So right now, putting it in the CIP kind of moves it to the next phase of having to go through, you know, all those processes we do with a project as far as SEQA and, you know, taking it to council and bringing CIP to council. We get a chance for council to weigh in on their thoughts on it. And it's kind of a public process there. So we haven't had a neighborhood meetings at this point.
Okay, so they haven't been noticed on this at all? So, okay. So in other words, if we vote for this, we're not actually endorsing it. We're just saying, you can think about it.
Right. Yeah, and just for a clarification, Commissioner, you're basically just voting for general plan compliance? So this, it's not a project. It's like there's no SEQA in this particular action because nothing exists yet. It's just the concept in order to, for them to be able to possibly move forward and do the thing.
I just want to make sure, it's noted that, you know, I personally would not be endorsing this at this stage. Because like I said, that's kind of a residential neighborhood and I'm not sure that'd be the best location. I mean, you have some city property there. But, okay. Any other questions? Or any of city engineer here about this particular thing, fuel thing? Okay. And that would, what, of course, there's no numbers there. What's the cost approximately of putting in a gas station for the city?
Right, we've been working on that. And it's a, depending on where we end up with a number of things, but it looks like it's kind of that mid, you know, $600,000 range in there, five to seven, depending on how, how things line up.
Excuse me, I was rattling my papers. How much, sir?
Roughly somewhere between five and $700,000.
Okay. And, oh, what was your name again?
Jesse Willer.
Jesse Willer. And you live in Eureka?
Nope, I live in Bayside.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you said, that's why, but I, I had forgotten your name. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So any other comments from the commissioners about this, staff, anything like that? No, no questions? All right. All right, then. Oh, yeah, public comment. Sure. Anybody have any public comment in the audience? Okay, seeing none. No public comment. All right. Thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, so let's, do I hear a motion to support this or to deny it? That's right. You get the whole thing.
Geez. I move that the planning commission adopt a planning commission resolution finding that the CIP 2020 is in conformance with the city's adopted general plan and that we forward a recommendation to adopt CIP 2020 to the city council along with any commissioner or public commons.
All right. Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, Rich seconds. All right. Any discussion on this further? No? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say, who are proposed, say no. Okay, motion carries, three to nothing.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing is draft bylaws. Some red scratch outs and changes on our bylaws. There we go. Okay, take it away there.
So has been our, has been our practice for approximately the last five years. At the January meeting, I bring to you an updated version of the bylaws. And there can be various updates that might happen to it. In this particular instance, we are updating the front page with ensuring that all the current planning commissioners' names are on there. And then the changes that were made to the department now being under Public Works, or at least temporarily being under Public Works. And then staff changes, staff title changes, that kind of information. I also am proposing to make a couple of places in here a little more generic. So instead of saying, for example, the Director of Development Services or the Director of Public Works, instead of naming the specific department, I'm just proposing to change it to the Director of the Department. And the front page would then show what the department is. On...
Oh, wait. What, what, what's the advantage of that?
Then we don't have to go back and change it every time our department changes. On the Order of Business, which is on page nine, I updated that to reflect the way that we have been doing our business recently. And then on page 10, I added in some language about requesting that folks provide their name and their, and where they live, to indicate that we can request that, but they are not required to give it. And that if somebody declines to provide their name, then we would actually just enter them into the minutes as, and the draft proposes to say anonymous. I'd like to change that anonymous to unidentified speaker. So that would just be one change. And then, again, just some cleanup. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Well, so is this, we're now part of Public Works? Is that's what's going on? I thought that was just temporary interim.
It is just temporary, but we are currently under the Public Works Department.
Well, I was just wondering, if it's just interim, I'd kind of be hesitant to change the bylaws as to that. Because then, how long is it going to take for us to have somebody new? Or is that...
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's up to the, the new city manager. We may remain under Public Works, or he may decide to put us back under our own department again. And we could deal with that in the future. I just look at this as, this is what it is on the date that you're asking, that... that we're asking you to adopt this.
Is Gervin still in charge of Public Works?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for staff on that? No? Okay. I guess there's nobody in the audience to speak publicly. I don't. Anybody in the audience like to speak on this subject? Please approach the microphone. Okay, there are none. All right, so we'll close the, the public hearing. Okay. I don't know, I, to me, I, I wouldn't want to change the, the thing here, Public Works, Development Services. I'd kind of prefer to keep that the way it is and not have to switch it mid-year, because it was my understanding that that is just an interim situation. And so, I mean, this isn't a formal reorganization that we're seeing here in the city, is it? That's, I think, if that were the case, then I, I wouldn't have any objection to it. But I don't think that's the case, is that correct? Anybody here in the city know about that?
We don't know. It may become permanent, we just don't know the answer to that. There is no Development Services Department per se anymore, right now. We are part of Public Works at this point in time. And that's subject to change at any point in time in the future.
The city council changed that?
Yes.
They did?
They did.
Okay. What do you think? Anybody else have any comments on this?
Well, I mean, if that's how it's acting and functioning within the city currently, I feel like we should be reflecting how it's actively looking and functioning for transparency and also just for lack of confusion since, as you're saying, there is no Technical Development Services anymore. So that's just my thoughts on it.
What? What were your thoughts? No, seriously.
No, seriously, we just reflected that's what we're...
And we can... Sorry, we can always bring these back to you at any point in time during the year, or you can ask that they be brought back to you at any point in time, or they can just remain the way that they're adopted tonight until next year.
So what? What was the last word?
They can remain the way that you adopt them tonight until next year and then just be revised next year.
June?
Next January.
January. I, I sort of like the idea that Joe is suggesting that, although we may never, it might not happen, I just feel like we should see what, if we're bringing in a, a, a new person, that he should have some say in it. But we don't know if we are, if that's going to happen.
Correct.
What happens if we do nothing? Leave it like it is?
Then they're not updated with anybody's name? We have staff members and planning commissioners on there that aren't on the commission anymore or aren't on staff anymore?
We just can't change that part of it?
You can. You can choose not to, you can pick and choose the things that you're going to change and the things that you're not going to change, if you'd want to.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you, like, we do that, so like, if it comes up, I mean, how would it look like if, if like Public Works, you know, like, say if I was trying to look into the city and information, how would it be on the side? So all of these things are just like, right? Is that what you're saying? Like, if some kind of a poll load?
No, just in this document.
Just, oh, in these documents?
Yes.
Oh, your mic's on, huh?
Sorry.
There we go. Please repeat, please repeat that for the, for the listening audience in the back room.
I was just asking clarification, what it looks like for the outside world versus this document? So it's just on this document, it's not like for anything else other than just this space?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, I, maybe we should hold this over to the next meeting when there's more people here. What do you think? Is that a way to do that? We could hold it over until February?
You can make that motion?
Okay, I'd move that we would, I'd really, you know, the rest of it I really don't have a problem with, but that, that one section about the Development Services Department being under Public Works, I'd like to kind of look into that a little bit more. If we could, I'd make a motion to...
Well, that's already made. The council, the council did it.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we kind of table this until the next meeting when we have more people.
I'll second.
Okay, three hundred seconds.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, really, I know, God, that's, that's, they're all, the audio challenged there over there. Okay, so any discussion further on that? Rich, you got any?
No.
Okay.
And just for clarification, are you asking us to bring back additional information on that change? Or are you just wanting to have the full commission?
Yeah, yeah, the full commission would be nice, and a little bit extra information would be good. Maybe some kind of float chart about the city that, you know, something official that we could take a look at. So anyways, any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I did, yeah, there was no, nobody. So, okay, so if there's no, I'll call for the question here. All in favor of tabling this till the next meeting, say aye.
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 Okay, all those against, say no. Okay, hearing none, that carries, okay, we'll table that. But like I said, I did like the other changes, those were nice, you know, not having to ask people's names and stuff. I mean, we'll still ask, but don't have to force them to give their name, and that's nice. Okay, and so that would be the end of the road, I think. Any reports from anybody? No, no reports? Okay. All right. In that case, if there's no objection, I will adjourn the meeting. There we go.